I'd like to call this meeting to order. This meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted in person and is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. All are welcome to join us in person at 5 West Street. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Thank you. Will please rise for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability. Any citizens to comment? No. Seeing none. No special recognitions?
No ma'am.
Alright. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of 6:425?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 6:425.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Student reps. Any update on student reps?
It's gonna start October 8th.
Like it says? Okay. Perfect. Alright. Do we want, where's Glenn?
If we could go out of order this evening, Madam Chair, just to move on to the update on the Swiss parking lot, you do have a document in your packet on letterhead. We spoke about this at the last meeting when we talked about the need for a transfer of some CIP funds that had been dedicated at Swanson Road initially, back a couple years ago for HVAC work. We have found that we do have some sinkholes, actually some fairly large ones, that have formed in the center of the parking lot at Swanson Road Intermediate School. And so, we are moving forward. This outlines the process that, we have Mr. Gregoire here this evening if you have any questions, the process he's gone through to put this job out to bid. It is a very large job, potentially costing us, as this outlines, approximately $133,000 to have this item corrected. The transfer of the money in the CIP that you approved last time was for $150,000, giving us a little bit of a contingency should something go beyond that. I know that I did not do a great job of explaining exactly the problem with the parking lot, so I thought if anyone had any questions, Mr. Gregoire would be happy to be more clear about the actual issue that's there. But, that's entirely up to you, and I didn't know if anyone had any further questions. I do know that when we spoke, there was a question about the handicap parking that's at Swanson Road, on that end of the parking lot, that is not going to be impacted by this project. So, they got, will be coming in, you'll see in here, to put up a fence sometime later this month, and that fence is going to be farther, far enough away from those handicap spots that those can still be used, and will not impact the work that's being done.
Through the chair, can I ask, are we lose, are we going to during this, how many parking spots are we going to?
The rest of that parking lot. So, we'll be keeping the handicap spots, will be open, but the rest of that lot will be closed off for materials, equipment, and for the repair. They are saying about two weeks, which initially, I think we had thought longer than that.
That's quick.
Through the chair, we are gonna send out like a notice to the parents and stuff so they understand what's going on.
Dr. Lopez is already working on that, but we're waiting till we get a little bit closer to make sure that we have the right timeline.
Yeah, perfect.
But no, and her staff is aware that this is, will be coming at some point, and she's been communicating with them as well.
Awesome.
Through the chair, so will there still be a way to like turn around in that, isn't there, isn't it like a double, like a two-way? Like, how will we get to the handicap spots?
You'll have to come up off of, off Swanson, like toward the front, toward the front entrance, you know, like how the buses pull in?
Yep.
You'll have to come there and pull into the handicap spots, because cars don't usually come in up the other driveway and take a right, because the buses are going in that direction.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. And that will all be communicated to families for access to those. I was relieved when I found out, when Glenn told me that we weren't gonna have to relocate those, because they're in a perfect spot for families who need them, so, but those should be all set.
Excellent. Any other questions?
And then, just through the chair, it's two weeks from whenever we start.
When they start, because first they have to deliver materials, correct? Is that, you have to come up to the mic, Glenn?
Good evening. The first phase, which right now we're scheduling for the weekend of September 27th, is have the fence come in, which will block off the area of construction. Like, we're saying that the material needs to come in and be stored in that spot. On the 29th, that's when the material's gonna come in. We communicated very clearly with all the bidders that are putting in for this project that no material can come in during the school drop-off and pickup times. We wanna stay away from those, so they're aware they may come in earlier in the morning. We're working with the town to be okay on that, that we do have trucks coming in and out, but the construction, the startup of the machines will not start until the appropriate time, which right now during the week looks to be somewhere around 7:00, 7:30. Once the material comes in, they're basically clear to start the project, providing timing-wise, how they close out their other work. They may start the 30th, they may start the 1st of October, but they're projecting right now to start the following week. Really, this is completely driven by weather, that they can't work in the mud. So, that's really why the time is launched. We've been very fortunate on that side for us, that it's been very dry, so their projects are going along on time. If it maintains that, then our project will start on time as well. And then, if the weather turns really bad for us, then we would be shut down for a day or two, depending on how the site looks and what we can do.
So, through the chair, tentatively you're looking at the beginning of November for this to be basically completed.
God, I hope not. I'm hoping by the second week, end of the second week of October.
The 1st of October, and even if we take two weeks from there, you'll be in mid-October.
So, Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Well, mid-October.
I don't know, I don't know when it is this year. It's usually like 13?
Roughly.
Okay. That's our timeline.
As long as all goes well.
All goes well.
All indications seem to tell us that it's encapsulated in this one area, that it's not spread to other areas, and we do still have a claim out with the insurance company.
Yes, we're still working with the insurance company. When excavation is complete, and the tubing, the plastic, heavy gauge plastic, when that comes out, that's something they're gonna wanna take a look at, just to see if there's any indications of product failure, whether it was damaged beforehand, whether it was damage, or whether just natural occurrence of what happened, so. But they've been involved in the process, they're still involved in the process, there's no definitive answer from that until they can really see what's going on. Our initial excavation of the site to see, because we had no idea what was really happening other than, you know, we're losing the asphalt. Everything looks to be done okay. There's no, there was no big rocks in the excavation that would be okay, they brought in the wrong fill. Everything that was in there was three-quarter inch to an inch, which is what specifications were, compact and looked okay. There was nothing in there to say that the job wasn't done correctly. So, that's why we say, we look as though our timeline should be pretty tight, that we don't anticipate digging up any big rocks or anything like that. It looks though the site was prepared and done properly.
Through the chair, what is that plastic tubing, what was that plastic tubing for?
When you build big parking lots, when you get big rainstorms, what the town wants to do is stop surface water from entering into the treatment plant, and they wanna slow that water going down into the sewer line. So, basically, all the water comes over to a manhole, drops down underground, and what it does, it kinda lets that water come up. The height of that tube is here, and the outlet is up here. So, sort of like a septic system at your house, that water will sit in there and slowly disperse. So, when you get a small rainstorm, that water will disperse. When you get a full-blown one-inch-an-hour for, you know, three or four hours, that fills up pretty quick, and then that water will actually go out and hit our storm line, storm drain line. So, the system is put in place to try to slow that down, that all that water going into treatment plants just really kind of...
So, they're gonna replace those?
They're replacing those lines, yeah.
So, we will see if we are eligible for any kind of an insurance claim, so that's still out there. We just don't have any information. They're gonna come to the site when they dig it up to see what they see, so. More to come.
So, through the chairs, there a possibility, once we open this area up, that it's worse than we think?
We're replacing everything we can see, which is probably just a little bit more than a third, not quite half of the system. All indications from the asphalt that's there where the cars are parking, there's no dimples, there's no falling off. Everything looks to be okay, it just seems really odd that it's just that part. We feel pretty comfortable saying we think we're okay.
Great. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. You may go on your merry way.
Have a great day.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
You too. Thank you.
Alright, and we'll move into unfinished business.
Alright. So, the first item is the second read of the fundraising accounts, and I will tell you that as we left the last time, we continued to raise more questions than answers. I think when we left, that JJE, the one filed JJE, seemed to be pretty straightforward for the committee. The one that still raised questions was JJE. You will see that what's in blue on, oh, did you, do you not have a, oh, you do have a color card. Okay, I thought, I was looking at black and white. Okay, okay. I read the whole thing. So, the, what's in blue are changes since the last time. What's in red is exactly what was in red the last time. So, we are taking out some of the things that we had kind of touched on the last time. However, in looking back into this again, and going back to MASC, which is where we typically get our draft policies from, this policy was updated very recently. And the major update to this policy is on the back page in blue. Student and student groups are barred by state law and regulation from organizing raffles or games of chance, participating in sales of, or purchasing tickets of such games. So, certainly, you know, we can have the discussion tonight, I think we need, still need more time with some of this. That's gonna be a big change for us. At some of our games, they'll do a 50/50 raffle, even at some of our concerts. Now, those things can still happen, but they can't be done by children or students, right? So, if the Booster Club wants to do it, or the adults from FAME want to do it, sure. And I don't have a good answer yet from the town about whether or not, if those people are doing it, if they need a permit. I think Chairperson Harrington last time had said, right, AYFS, they have to get a permit for any kind of raffles that they have. So, I don't have information on that yet. But, this can still happen, we just have to make sure it happens in a certain way. And that it's adults who are putting this forward, selling tickets, and collecting the money for those things. And I guess, you know, when you think big picture, we don't wanna be teaching children to gamble, because any kind of raffle or game of chance is a form of gambling. So, I understand where this is coming from, but that is a new addition to this policy. So, I'll answer any questions you have, but I think we're gonna need a little bit more time with this. Did you leave something?
I was just checking my wallet. I'm sorry. Can't believe I don't do this.
Oh, is it over on the chair?
It's on the chair.
No problem.
Don't worry about it. Thanks again.
Have a good night. Any questions?
So, through the chair, so when I was just reading through this, I was trying to find like, like the beginning, middle, and end, right? So, if I am the math teacher that's also the soccer coach, and I want to, my kids come to me and they say, "We wanna do whatever the fundraiser is." When this goes, is there an email that goes out to all of the faculty, coaching staff that says, "This is the new policy, this is where the form to fill out is, this is how you fill it out," you know, and then obviously in the policy, what you can, the cans and can't do's, you know, kind of a deal? And then, does every, I guess fundraiser have an account? So, like, football has an account, drama has an account, soccer has an account, field hockey has an account?
They don't have a separate bank account, but because we hold everything in one student activities account, but we're working, and I think at our next meeting, Jen and I are gonna be talking about student activities accounts, because she's been doing a lot of work on that, but they are tracked separately.
Okay.
So, you know, if one raises $1,500, the other one raises $1,000, they know that that's what they've raised. Then whatever they spend is also reflected in the accounts that we keep.
Yeah, 'cause it just said student accounts, but it didn't qualify with the specifics. I just wanted to make sure that that was a...
Yeah, and it is a separate, it's a separate account, so it's not a, it's a school account, that's our student activities account. It's not, it doesn't go into like the town general fund, right? It's a separate account established just for the handling of those funds.
Yeah. And then, who has access? Only faculty and coaches? Is it...
Jen, maybe you wanna explain the process, so if someone wants to spend some of that money?
I think I'm missing like one thing, and I was like, I think...
And that is more student accounts versus fundraising, student activities, but Jen can kind of address how that works.
So, student activities, again, the high school, all of the schools have an account. Middle school and high school have sub-accounts, in which there's clubs, classes, and different things. So, the clubs that would do any fundraising, or classes that do any fundraising, all of that money would be deposited into the agency account.
Correct.
And then, there is also the checking account there. So, all of the funds are then tracked within the sub-accounts, within the spreadsheet. So, there's a student activities treasurer at each of the buildings, which is one of the secretaries.
Right.
So, then, the, she shares, the advisor that is in charge of the club needs to keep track of what their club is doing and whatnot. She keeps track of the spreadsheet, and there is deposit slips that they need to complete, withdrawal slips that they need to complete for any expenses that they would want to do. It needs to be signed off on by the advisor, if the club has a treasurer, by the student treasurer, if there is one. It also needs to be signed off on by the principal, and then it comes through the business office for either to issue a check from the checking account, or through the accounts payable warrant process. So, there is quite a checks and balances along the way.
Yeah, no, that part in this, in the, like, I think it's like paragraph four, that was very, but I guess it was, the advisor has to sign off it. So, if the kids come, the advisor needs to make sure that they have the form to start the process for what they're fundraising for. And then, you go, and the representative, maybe a teacher, coach, or a parent, all athletic booster sports, you know, I mean, it does, it does say, I just was trying to figure out that first signature, I think is what it was, where I was like, what if I came up with a great idea, and I said, "Hey, Megan, the field hockey team, you should do this." Do I tell, who do I tell to say, "Hey, this is a good," like, "Do you see what I mean?"
So, that's actually been part of our policy, just we've not been implementing it very well. So, we already now, Jen set up a Google form, and what happens is, they fill it out, and then the principal gets notified that somebody has put in that they wanna do a fundraiser, this is the purpose. They think they might raise, I mean, it's hard to know, right, about this much money. And then, the principal approves it, and then I approve it. So, we have alerts set on those forms, so that we get notified right away when someone requests that.
Yeah, I think that was the piece.
So, actually, I think just in the last week, I think I've approved seven, eight of them, of requests to run fundraisers, and then they get the ball rolling from there.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that was...
I misunderstood.
Yeah, I said, like, I'm like trying to explain it, but I'm not understanding it. I'm like, mm, okay, we're in. I understand. I actually think it was written well, like with the edits and everything. So, from my standpoint, I know that the, which one is it? JJE, I would feel comfortable, through the chair, making a point on that. JJE, I think, as long as we clearly define the who's doing the raffle, I think they're both, the edits that you guys made are right in line, it was much clearer, this paper, this one was much clearer than the last one.
Other questions?
So, through the chair, I still have a concern about us putting Booster Club in here, because they are a separate entity. So, that's, I do have a concern there. Has anyone reached out to the Booster Club and kinda chatted with them about that? Because I feel like...
Through the chair, so the reason that we had put that in place is, there is companies, fundraising companies, that are reaching out directly to coaches and going through and doing those things. So, we wanted to ensure that there was a handle on what the teams were doing, so that the athletic director had...
No, I totally understand that. What I'm asking is, is like, how does a Booster Club feel? Now, you're talking about separate companies, I'm talking about the Booster Club itself. That's a group of like parents, and how do they feel about now having to now talk to the athletic director about doing fundraising?
Yeah, so I will tell you, we didn't speak with them, and the intention is not to limit what they want to do.
Just be aware of it.
Just to be aware of it, as a balance. It's not, it's not looking at it as, "We're gonna tell you what you can do," but we need to, we...
But that's not the language in here. All Athletic Booster Club, sport fundraiser must be initially approved by the athletic director, so it's saying must be, so.
But I think that's the next sentence, "To work with, to ensure the development of a fundraising calendar that is equitable to all sports and does not overburden." So, that's the, that's the intent.
No, and I see where you're coming from, it's just, if I read this, that's not how I would read it. And then, on top of it, we have, that's not our, like, we make policy for the district, not for the Booster Club. So, they could just be like, "Go to the Birds," you know? So, that's a concern, I think that maybe we should reach out to them and just say, like, "Can you read this portion of the policy? Are you okay with this?" Because, we just wanna be notified, but we just wanna make sure that you guys feel comfortable with this, because, to me, I read this like, "Oh, I have to tell them." So, does that mean that they're gonna say no?
Maybe the better word is notified, but we will reach out to them, and we will look at that.
And then, the other thing that I, like, one thing I have a concern about is like the approximate amount to be raised. Are you looking for how much they want to make, or how much they think they're going to make? Because to me, I could do a fundraiser and be like, "I wanna raise $1,000," but I could raise 10, or I could raise 5. So, I just don't, I don't think, I don't even think that's really important. Like, just knowing that, I'm fine with knowing, like, knowing the dates, you know, I know, just speaking from own experience, I have to, if my, if my club does a fundraiser, I have to put down the club name, the dates that it's running, who the, who the like person is, me, and then I have to put in like, what the fundraiser is, and then what it's going towards. That's, I don't have a problem with that, but if they asked me to, "How much?", I'd be like, "I don't," like, if I've never done it before, I have no idea. So, some years I raised 500, other years I raised 2,000. So, like, I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily significant, because, you know, you already know where it's planning on going, so why does the amount matter?
I think, I think just curiosity, honestly, and just to have a ballpark, if they're, like, I think the scope of what they're trying to raise should fit the purpose of what they're identifying, I guess. But I'm not, again, if there's money left over, I'm not saying, "Well, you can't keep it," because you said you wanna raise $1,000, and you raised 1,500. But, we can certainly consider that.
And then, the only other thing that I still kinda have an issue with is the, on the second page, which fundraiser activities may not involve competition among students. Students may not be rewarded with additional recess, snacks, activities, or any type of prize for having raised a larger amounts of food funds or reaching fundraising goals. I mean, I just have a problem with that whole, because to, if you're raising money, like the kids at Swiss do like the run. The, you know, sometimes if you're raising money, like, I know, you know, I can only speak from my own experience, but in my own school, like, we have, sometimes the kids that win for, you know, raising the most their homeroom might get like, a homework pass. So, like, I personally, I just wanna know the intent behind that, because I don't, I feel like we're gonna cut off things like, especially at the high school, you know, like, I feel like we've, we're doing this, like, giving a kid a t-shirt for, you know, raising the most and being part of the fun run. Like, then we're, then based on that, we can't do that. And I don't think it's a bad thing to promote fundraising, I think it, I don't know, I kinda feel like it promotes like a healthy, like, not everyone gets an award.
Through the chair, and speaking with an advisor, they kinda had the same idea, more so with the group activities in particular. I guess they have communities at the high school, so each community will raise money for their class or whatnot, and this, if you raise the most, you get a prize. And I think it's kind of similar, everybody doesn't get a prize, that's sometimes how things go, I think about the, is it the fun run at Swiss or whatever? My kids are never gonna win that, but I think it's a great thing that they do, and the 20 most fast kids get a t-shirt, and I think that's an okay thing. I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing. And in this case, especially at the high school, what I'm hearing is that it does encourage kids to work together, it's encouraging community.
Yeah, like an extra recess, to me, is not a bad thing.
I have a clarifying question. So, is this, so this says students, I, and I guess when I read this, I'm thinking individual students may not be rewarded. What you're saying is, if this allows groups of students to get a reward, you would want, let me, let me say this properly, you're in support of groups of students, so a class or a grade level, of getting some kind of a reward, because as a total, they raised so much?
Yep.
I think the intent of this is about a competition between individual students.
Then, I would say individual student. Okay. Is that unclear? Because students, to me, is plural.
It gets to the, it gets to an equity issue, right? I may not have the means or the opportunity to even sell anything, because, for whatever reason. And so, I don't wanna be made to feel badly about that, right? But if I'm rewarded, because as a whole, my class did the best that they could...
Yeah. I would just change it to, fundraising activities may not involve competition among individual students. Individual students may not be rewarded with additional recess, snacks, activities, or any type of prize for having raised larger amounts of funds or reaching fundraising goal. Groups of student, maybe just say like, groups of students is allowed. Because if, like, if my daughter's fourth grade class raises the most money, then like getting an extra recess is like, "Hey, guys, you all..." Even if Joe in the class raised a dollar, and my daughter raised 200, it shouldn't matter. And they already do that at Swiss, they already do it at PAC.
PTO does that.
Yeah, PTO, but I mean, but what this is saying is no.
Well, that's my other slight concern, and I don't know how to get around that. I know that PTO does a lot, and they provide us with a lot, and I think it's great, but I'm thinking back to the magazine drives that they did, where kids could win flashing lights, and they had all the kids come to the auditorium and tell them to put their stuff on social media. So, even though that's not part of the school, it's happening within the school, how are we gonna differentiate that to our community? So that they know that this is happening within school things, but hey, your kindergartner could come down, and if that's even still happening, 'cause I don't wanna, on the other side, I don't wanna take that away. It pays for all of our field trips, it pays for all of our buses.
PTO does it by the class, or the grade, depending on what it is. Do you know what I mean? So, it's the first grade at Bryn Mawr, it's, you know, Mrs. Fromannick's kindergarten class.
It's by the class, yes, but I'm just saying, how do we differentiate that? I don't even know if they still do the magazine thing that they used to do, but I just know that back then, when they did it, if you sold $100, you got a light-up ring or something. I don't know what it was. I never sold $100. So, yes, that's not part of the school, it's very important, it's their best fundraiser that they did at the time, at least, but how can we say that that's okay, and this isn't? I have a little struggle with that personally.
So, again, as I said, I think we definitely have more work to do on this, so let's see what we can find out in that regard, and see how they're approaching that.
But, on top of the gambling, which also stinks, but it's a state law, so I think we can't be gambling with children, so that's, that's definitely important.
And through the chair, I like how Dr. Chamberlain explained it, like, adults can do it, but not the students, and I think that's the right way to handle it. Like, you know, if the teachers wanna be the ones in charge of the 50/50 raffle, like, then they should be the ones handling the money and things like that. And so, I think that's just a clear way, like, you're, you're under the age of 18, you can't do this.
But, they also can't buy them. Right? So, yeah.
Could they buy them before?
So, I don't know about a 50/50, honestly, I don't know. I know, I suspect when we do that basket raffle, because of rockets-to-rockets thing, would I imagine that some kids bought tickets to win a basket?
Yeah.
Imagine they did. I would imagine they did. I can't say for sure, but I would imagine they would.
Alright, well, that's the end of that.
Yep. Yep. Through the chair, the stuff that comes through the PTO though is marked. It doesn't say this is Auburn Elementary School or this is Auburn Middle School. It says PTO, supporting your children's and whatever it is.
Which is great, and I love that.
It's all over the flyer, so they know that it's not.
Yep.
But they're pulling them down out of class during class hours to do it, which is important. I'm just one where if we're going to put all the restrictions, I don't want to take away from PTO at all, so I don't know how to fix it, I guess, you know what I mean?
Let's get more information.
Yeah, I think PTO and Booster is, is a different entity and we got to write it the right way so that they can do them and then still kind of heads up.
They do great things.
Through the chair, just a clarifying point because you mentioned it, Dr. Chamberlain, but are we, is our plan to have people register their fundraisers in a Google form? Is that what the plan is? It's not going to be on paper, it's just going to be a Google form that they could put it in?
Which will be nice and quick and easy, it's not like this big long form, I think that's much better, yeah.
Perfect, I, yeah, I just want to make sure that it's quick and easy. Teachers don't have to like now spend hours finding all this information.
I honestly believe that this is the quickest way. So this should have been being done all along, quite frankly, that's been in the policy. Um, and we have alerts set up on the accounts on the form. So as soon as somebody enters something, we get notified so that it's not sitting down.
Through the chair, which I guess is me tonight, but one more question. Through me. For this training, the annual training, is that going to be a student? Is that going to be an adult? And if it's an adult, do they go every single year? I'm, I'm thinking of like the bloodborne pathogen thing I do every single year, that's the same. Is it going to be, is it something that needs to be annual if somebody's done it already three times or whatnot?
Mrs. Stanek, I'll let you answer that.
It needs to be annually because it's financially, um, so this, our school committee, no, I apologize. Our student activities, policies and procedures, which are in line with most other districts, it is an annual training. And it is, I have to say, it is extremely important that they understand and review the policies on an annual basis. So I've already conducted it at the middle school and the high school for this year. They do know that the fundraising policy was up to be revised, but it is something that they need to do on an annual basis.
And how long is the training?
Depends on how many questions they ask. So this year, it was, one building was a half an hour and the other building, it was an hour.
OK, so not too long, OK.
And I think that, like anything, the more um, regular it becomes, the quicker it becomes.
Yeah, right.
You know what I mean? Once you get some people who have done it, then it's not going to be what it is.
Start kicking each other, no more questions.
Yeah, yeah, we already know how to do this.
All right, cool, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
New superintendent search, that's me. So we had our first meeting, um, just a meet and greet so we could sign some confidentiality things um, and go over, it seems like a very great group of people who want to find a wonderful superintendent for Auburn. Just a timeline, um, the application will be up until October 31st, at which point um, all of the applicants will be able to be reviewed by the team. We're then going to meet as a committee, I don't have the date in front of me, but um, soon after that to decide who will bring forward for the first um, interview. That interview, although it is going to be conducted under open meeting laws, will be in executive session because we don't want people not knowing, not applying. So that will be under executive session. All of the minutes for that meeting, we're not going to put names of the people so that anybody who applies for the district, their, their other district will know, not know. Um, from there, we'll have those interviews. I'm hoping after that first set of interviews, we can bring two to three maybe people forward to school committee. On the in-between time between that, it would be great to have them meet the schools, have some focus groups, so we can really get a good idea of what the community wants. Um, we already have a number of applicants who have applied, so people like us. Let's see, I like us. Yep.
I mean, it's obviously because of us.
Obviously, but it's looking good. Great, good. All right, new business.
OK, so guess what? We're already talking about budget for FY '27. Uh, so at the next meeting, Mrs. Stanek's going to provide you with the budget timeline and we'll share um, all the documents and all of that. But at this time of year, I'd like to just put it out to the committee just as a discussion with what you would like us to keep as budget priorities as we begin this process and what we should be keeping at the forefront of our thinking. Last year, I know, you know, class size, um, social emotional learning, but I, I wonder if any of you have any input to us as we begin this process.
I think class size is always important.
Good chair, class size, safety is always a big one for me. Obviously, the emotional support is a huge one for me.
I'd like to, I, class size, big one. Um, but also I think that I'd like to try to maintain at our current level. So like staffing, I don't want to go down in staffing. We want to try to maintain where we're at, especially since we have that new um, housing development coming in. So just being aware of our staffing and try not to lose too many people. Or anyone, yeah, or anyone.
I will share preliminary discussions with the town. Um, as they always are, they're never uplifting when we meet with the town to talk about the budget, even though they are very supportive, so I don't want to confuse that issue. But indications are they're going to want us to come in at a pretty tight number, so.
Shoot for the moon.
We will do our best. Just putting that out there.
Um, through the chair, are we, are we short anybody starting the school year off? Were we missing?
We have, we have not been able to hire a special education teacher at the high school. We had someone leave at the end of last year. So at this point, we had one last hope of an application and they um, decided not to take the position. We are going to have to contract out until we can hire someone. Uh, but other than that, for professional staff, we've been fully staffed.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I'm like, I'm.
So is that like agency, we'll have to use agency for that?
Yes, which is expensive. Um, so we're going to keep trying to, we, we're, we're going with someone that we have the potential that if they have someone, we can move to hire. Um, and then they get a certain percentage of whatever the salary is.
OK.
Um, so we're hoping that we can get someone for fairly quickly. We had, we had a great candidate, it just didn't work out. We thought we were going to be able to get it, but um, it didn't work out. That's a special education teacher at the high school is one of those very difficult positions to fill. So I'm sure we will, uh, and we're, staff is chipping in and we're working around things to get things done right now. Um, but Carrie Cox, our new director of pupil services, is working on the contract for the uh, agency.
MAS C conference.
Just letting everyone know that Chairperson Harrington, Vice Chair Dr. McCrillis, uh, member Brooke Rann and Sam Rayhill will attend the three-day MAS C conference down at the Cape on November 12th, 13th and 14th. Uh, and so I'm excited to go, I hope you are too. I think, I hope you got a reminder about uh, where you're staying from someone, right? We need to make those reservations, so um, yes, just letting folks know that we'll be attending that. It's not on my birthday this year, so that's a good thing too.
All right, bus transportation.
Bus transportation continues to be monitored closely. Um, we've been collecting counts for the number of students on each bus directly from the bus driver each day to make sure that what we believe for numbers of kids on buses is exactly what's um, on buses. Um, we continue to have some challenges with our special education busing. This is a typical thing at the start of year, it takes us a little while. Some kids have a hard time getting on the bus and it, just routes take longer at the beginning of the year as kids acclimate back to school. Um, but we are working on that, we've been working with families as well so that they know that we understand that all of our kids need to get to school on time and we're doing our best to make that happen. Uh, on a lighter note, um, I had to share with you the coloring book that our school resource officers created. Um, oh, I didn't bring, because I was late getting to the meeting, the stickers.
The stickers are the best.
The stickers are the best. So um, Officer McCarthy used AI and an image of himself to make a caricature on a sticker of himself with a statement at the bottom that says, make good choices. And he gives those out to kids and they have been a hot commodity. I actually, I wanted to get one for each of you and I didn't. But this coloring book is also very specifically Auburn-esque, right? It has the picture of some of the town buildings, it has um, their robot. Um, I just thought it was the cutest thing, their Beza and the police cars. So they'll be giving these out with um, when they go to some of the schools for kids. So I just thought it was the cutest thing for them to do, so I had to share that with you. But we appreciate our SROs and all the work that they, they do for our schools, so.
Through the chair, can Beza come to a school committee meeting one day?
Oh, I don't know, maybe.
That'll be fun.
He's just cute. That's a, that's a different handler, those aren't our SRO guys, but we can certainly see if their friend will bring them along.
Or maybe the therapy dogs that I hear so much about, this is really not fair.
All right, Mr. Keller, teaching and learning.
Yeah, so uh, last time we met, I talked a little bit about um, our summer programs for students as well as um, the um, summer curriculum work that teachers did. I wanted to update you on um, our first two professional development days, uh, on the 25th and 26th. Um, you've heard me talk a lot um, in the past year about the work that we've done with Empowering Writers. Uh, we started that program in grades K through five all of last year uh, with professional development. We're continuing our professional development uh, with uh, with those grade levels this year. And we also started um, last year with sixth through eighth grade in ELA, Science and Social Studies. And they had their second um, half of the professional development on the 25th. Um, and it's really, I'm very excited because a lot of districts, a lot of schools just focus on ELA and we have talked um, extensively about writing is not just something that happens in English class. And so bringing in Science and Social Studies and bringing those people, those teachers on board with our writing initiative, I think is going to um, prove very worthwhile. So um, they had professional development on the 25th, as I mentioned. Um, you know, and a couple, you know, some of the big points that they talked about there in, in terms of narrative is, you know, looking at character, point of view, setting, plot motivation. The way Empowering Writers um, sets itself up is that um, we look at literature that we're currently reading, whether that be an article in science or social studies, or a short story, um, or an informational piece in English class. We look at that, we talk about, let's say, if we're talking about entertaining beginnings or an introduction. So we, uh, as a teacher, we talk about what that introduction is. Um, and then we as a teacher, then uh, after we've done that and talked about that process and author's point of view, we then try and become an author in front of the students. And so we begin writing an entertaining beginning for something that we're writing and we workshop that and ask questions and the class participates and discusses. And then the next phase of that is guided practice. So students then have an opportunity to try that out on their own and then finally uh, applying that in a, in a larger writing piece. So it is a very um, skill, very explicit skill-driven process. And that's one of the things that many teachers have struggled with and in writing, it always seems like this really big thing and how do I help students? And so Empowering Writers really breaks it down into a very skill-specific, so. So that was exciting, um, and we got great feedback from teachers. Empowering Writers has been outstanding, so over the course of last year, and again, just yesterday, actually, we did a Zoom with a couple of the trainers um, with some, some issues, some things that teachers were struggling with. And so um, this was some of the opening sessions that we had. Uh, as you also are well aware, uh, we brought on a new um, K through eight math textbook uh, this, for the current year, iReady. And so uh, our K through eight math teachers were engaged in preparing for launch, where they talked about meaningful mathematical discourse. So it's this program and, and Dr. Chamberlain and I had the opportunity to see it yesterday in action. It is not just teacher at the front of the room throwing information at the kids and the kids uh, writing down notes and then doing it the way that the teacher says. There is multiple ways and that's one of the beauties of iReady and one of the things that attracted us to it is um, students can look at the different approaches that they can take to a problem and then talk about why they chose that approach and how they went about doing it. So um, it's a lot of student-led discourse in the classroom and so that's uh, some, what some of the professional development was. Try, discuss and connect and we continue to have professional development throughout the year um, as we move forward with iReady. And I, that's the grades two through five up in the top left and middle school teachers in the, at the bottom. Um, and just like I mentioned with Empowering Writers, iReady um, continues to support us and has been great. We had a, an afternoon session today with our accelerated uh, math teachers and iReady uh, as they are working through, uh, understanding how that program works, so. And then elsewhere, um, we had a lot of things happening throughout the district. A lot of grade level meetings, team meetings, safety team meetings. Uh, the nurses presented to staff um, AED, EpiPen, bloodborne pathogens, as Dr. McCrillis uh, mentioned earlier as well. Uh, you are well aware that we rolled out Parent Square and so training for all of our staff in Parent Square mandated training, uh, reviewing Alice. Uh, our elementary schools had open, including our preschool had open house. And then restorative practices continues to be a major initiative in our, in our schools. And we actually, this past summer, so we've been working with Suffolk University, who for the past three summers have trained staff in tier one restorative practices. Um, so this past summer, we had two teachers, Jeff Berg and Ariella Emanuel, um, become trained in leading that um, program. So they are going to be our uh, in-house trainers moving forward with that. So Suffolk is supporting us in, in that regard. So they actually went through two tier one trainings this summer. The first was kind of observing and what they call kind of a third wheel. And then the second uh, time with tier one, they, they um, took some leadership roles in teaching the teachers. So next summer, uh, they'll have the opportunity to just lead it themselves. So we're very excited to be able to move forward with that. And then the last thing I'll say is um, it was uh, wonderful on our opening, on the 26th, when everybody was here. Um, the thing that's not up there is Dr. Chamberlain was able to give her, uh, unfortunately for all of us, I think her last uh, uh, welcome to staff, but uh, she did a wonderful job as always, but sad to think about it being her last one.
Last horse day.
Yes. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, business and financials.
I provided you a year-to-date budget report of the FY '26 school year dated September 11th, 2025 for your review. And I have now, as I shared last meeting, I have a new report for you and I declared the first of my quarterly reports for you. Mr. Keller, bring that up for us. Turn it a little bit, but after my annual Masco conference and following the best practices of MAS C, I will be sharing quarterly reports. And additionally, I will seek your approval for budget transfers on a quarterly basis. Um, we have been doing all of this every two weeks, um, every time we met and it is very unusual and very cumbersome um, for that to be happening. So MAS C um, best practice and um, general law is quarterly reports. I can still provide a year-to-date budget report um, each time if you so choose because that's a quick and easy. Um, but I wanted to be a little bit more informative so that we can have more conversation around the budget um, process. So um, just for your information, quarter one is July to September for us. So this is the quarter, quarter one report. So these are our September comparisons and I've given you the comparisons from FY '26 to FY, um, FY '25 to FY '26. So you can see the difference and the percent change. Quarter two is October to December, so I'll bring a report in December. And then quarter three is January to March. And then quarter four is April to June. That gets a little tricky because that's when I have to close the year out. So typically, like we did the first meeting for the school year, I will share all of that information um, with you. Are there any questions before I review the report with you? All right. So as you know, the original appropriation increased 3.8% in FY '26 for us. Um, despite the increase, our year-to-date expenditures um, are lower at this point in the year and that's for the following reasons, due to our uncertainty of our out-of-district transportation and tuition. We've not encumbered all of those expenses at this time, which we also um, offset with grants as well as circuit breaker funds. So um, we're working on that. Additionally, there are still some open support positions um, that administrators are working on filling. And you will see that the increase in encumbrances represents the 3% increase for most salary, uh, salary positions. It's also um, increase of the cost of supplies. So shipping and handling, the tariffs and all of those things um, are hitting the budget. So as a result, the available budget balance is significantly higher right now in FY '26 compared to FY '25 at this time. However, please know that those out-of-district transportation and tuition costs will decrease that available budget significantly. And as well as the cost of substitutes, which has just begun with the, that. So that's not an encumbered thing that happens as staff is out. Um, so, and then I did list out here the encumbrances, which they include. At this time, it includes the majority of the salaries, the supplies, our technology expenses, which include our contracts, athletic and fine arts expenses, but not all of our coaching salaries or those at this point. Transportation, facilities contracts, our utilities, our building repairs and improvements and our legal services. And those are the costs that we know and we're able to project. And then um, just, just show you a little bit um, different in a pie graph. The year-to-date, what is, has been expended. Our orange are encumbrances, what we are planning on spending. And then the green is our available budget. Again, it is higher at this time, but that will decrease significantly soon enough once all the salaries are settled. And the transportation, um, those out-of-district transportation, we've had some issues with Assabit Valley and so we're working on, on doing that because of van pool, cabs for kids and we're working on out all of those situations. I hope you find that this report is helpful and I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have. I hope you find that this report is helpful and I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have. And I'd love to hear your thoughts.
I love the pie chart.
Agree. Yeah, I like it. I, I can understand it.
And would you like me to continue with the year-to-date budget report every two weeks?
I think I'd rather wait until Jessie gets back before we make that decision.
Certainly.
Just to make sure that she has a, she has a say in it.
And then I just have um, uh, list of budget transfers dated September eleventh, twenty twenty five between the same series for which I'm seeking your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated September eleventh, twenty twenty five as presented by the business manager.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye. You're welcome.
All right, and we do need executive session.
We do, yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion in pursuant with MGL C thirty A twenty-one A two to adjourn to, into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, we will not return to open session.
I'll second. All right, uh, roll call vote. Steph?
Aye. Yes, love this.
Sam?
Here. Yes, whatever.
Yes. Take the vote. Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night.